I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, in the name of this holy and just as law.
Okay, we'll start the meeting with the oath of office. And I guess initially, we can do the council persons. Come on and do those all at once.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Ms. Teresa Rice.
To Psalm I swear.
To Psalm I swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
As your position.
As your position.
With finality, so help me God.
With finality, so help me God.
If anyone would like an oral opportunity, if anyone individually or together, I can hold the meeting for a few minutes. You guys are straight. So, hope yourself.
Bye, everyone, sorry.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for stepping up again. I appreciate it. Certainly welcome. Welcome. All right, next. May I have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
Motion for approval.
It was the main second to approve the agenda all in favor of the same I.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all things according to the order.
And second by Lumbering. All in favor, this evening by the same I.
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next, is visitors' public comments. Items not on this evening's agenda, which we don't have a whole lot. Please come forward and address the council.
Surely, Paul, wanting to weigh the priorities of the crowd. I just have a quick question about the upcoming workshop on the vacation rentals. Just wondering what the purpose is and what the agenda is.
That's a good question, because I don't have any answers for that. I guess we can go to the manager. What is the...
Mayor and council on the workshop that is scheduled for January 22nd. You'll be reviewing your current short-term vacation rental codes and reviewing the other case law and I guess what other sister cities are doing. The purpose is to address the public comments that we have received on vacation rentals. You might recall about a little over a year ago, spring of '22, similar comments came forward. We asked if you wanted to look at it at that time, and we said no, we're good with this. That's right. There has been some additional case laws and plans, and so the purpose is to review the municipal code as currently written and address some of the concerns.
All right. Thank you, Zune. Answer your question.
Absolutely. That's helpful, thanks.
Anyone further? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Two. Public hearing on his own request.
So, mayor and council, our planner Eric was unable to come this evening. His back didn't tilt up. So, this evening, we have a public hearing on the zone change request for Boys and Girls Club. And this request went to the planning board on December 12th, whereby they manulously approved the request. You can see with the attached draft minutes from the planning board meeting, we had several people speak. Most were strongly in favor, one neighbor expressing concern. The city has not received any written comment. We noted that in the packet. So, this request, so I'm just going to go through the staff report. This property is located at 165 Veterans Drive, and it's adjacent to the St. Richard's church. A few months ago, they went through that subdivision fighting to create lot two of what's referred to as the St. Richard's subdivision. So, the request is to amend the zoning from CR3-1 family residential to CB2 general business. So, when this property was split, and on the GIS system right now, it doesn't show the pretty picture with the lot split, but this is about what it looks like. So, the preliminary plan created two lots. The Boys and Girls Club has purchased lot two. And then reviewing, so typically, along adjacent to the highway corridor, it is zoned CB2 or CB4 along the public avenue. This property was double CR3. The church was built 60-something, 19...
Real early 60s.
Real early 60s. Anyway, churches were a conditional use and were just schools on residential zones. So, that's why it was never actually changed to like a CB2. It was this conditional use. So, as the planning staff moved forward with the application, personally looked at, would it be a conditional... So, a church is a conditional use, as it is like this. The Boys and Girls Club could be a conditional use in a CR3 zone, but it made more sense to our planner, and it follows our growth policy, to just change the zoning on this parcel. The church is not, has not asked for a zone change on their lot one, St. Richard's subdivision. So, it made more sense to move forward with a zone change on lot two. So, as I indicated, it was previously part of this, and you can see in the figure here, it was part of the big chunk of land that St. Richard's, that the diocese owned for the St. Richard's church. Adjacent zoning is to the north is CB2, former Burger King, propane storage, auto repair. To the south is CRA1, and that's immediately adjacent to Glenn's addition, single-family townhouse lots and single-family homes. To the west, we have CB2 and CI1, our light industrial. So, there's the former daycare where the old shop is, the audience service. And then to the east, it's zone CR3, CB2, and CRA1. And we have St. Richard's church, the gym shop, and then some mixed-density residential. So, we got everything in there. So, the growth policy map designates the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the church property, for commercial zoning. As I indicated, that's very typical of the property adjacent to the highway corridor. So, the proposed zone change to CB2 is in compliance with the growth policy map. Commercial use will complement nearby commercial and industrial uses. So, this is, the property is within our city limits and will connect to city water and sewer services at the time of construction. So, the property funds Veterans Drive. With the intended use as a Boys and Girls Club, the property is close to schools and surrounding neighborhoods. So, the property is already annexed into the city limits. It'll be served by city water, city sewer, the fire department, police department, and of course, blood and electric co-op. So, when we go through our statutory criteria, does it comply with the growth policy? Number one, yes, it does. The property is designated as commercial, for general commercial use in our growth policy map. And the intended use as Boys and Girls Club complies with that. Is the requested zone designed to lessen congestion in its streets? The subject property is located along the designated collector's street, Veterans Drive. Veterans Drive accesses Highway 2 on the north and is close to the signalized intersection with 12th Avenue West. The southern extent of Veterans Drive intersects Calvert Road, providing east-west movements. There are sidewalks along Highway 2 and 12th Avenue West and a bike path along Veterans Drive. Will the requested zone secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers? The property is located within the city limits of Columbia Falls. The new use will connect to city water and sewer. The Columbia Falls police and fire departments serve the property. They already serve Columbia Falls. The property is not located or mapped within a hundred-year floodplain of the Five Edge River. The property is adjacent to a collector's street system with a bike path and sidewalks. And as with the majority of properties along Highway 2, general business is a dominant use. Will the requested change promote the health and general welfare? The property is adjacent to other commercial uses and borders Veteran Drive and the railroad tracks. The proposed zone change is compatible with the neighboring uses and will promote health and general welfare. In addition, the proposed Boys and Girls Club use will create a transition from what could be intensive commercial to the single-family residential neighborhood. Will the requested zone provide for adequate light and air? So, the existing CR3 setbacks are 20 feet in the front, 10 feet on the side, 15 feet on the side of one, and 20 feet in a rear yard. The proposed CB2 setbacks, as you're aware, are zero, except when it applies residential use. Therefore, the setback would be 15 feet on the south, on the border of the property. Will the requested zone prevent the overcrowding of land? The proposed zone change closely complies with the community's long-range planning document, the Columbia Falls Growth Policy 2019 Edition. The proposed zoning matches the zoning designation for the property located all along the Highway 2 corridor. The subject site is suitable for either commercial or the intended Boys and Girls Club, and the intensities associated with these uses are anticipated, so there should not be any perceived overcrowding of the way. Will the requested zone avoid undue concentration of people? The proposed commercial zoning will have similar concentrations of people as the CB2 zoning located all along the Highway 2 corridor. In fact, the proposed use is similar to church use and the school use is south of the property on 12th Avenue West and Veterans Drive. The proposed zoning is compatible with neighboring zoning and will not create an undue concentration of people. The growth policy map prescribes commercial use for this area, so a high concentration of people was anticipated in the long-range planning document. Will the requested zone facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements? The proposed zone change does not by itself provide or require the adequate provisions of infrastructure. However, when applicants go through the building permit review, the project is reviewed for access, parking, water, sewer, et cetera. Does the requested zone give reasonable consideration to the peculiar suitability of the property for particular uses? The subject property is sandwiched between the church and commercial uses to the east and commercial and industrial uses to the west. The intended use as a Boys and Girls Club will provide a transitional use for the single-family uses to the south. With proximity to nearby schools and residential neighbors, the proposed use will conveniently serve young people of Columbia Falls. Does the requested zone give reasonable consideration to the character of the district? Yes, the character of this neighborhood is commercial and industrial with proximity to Highway 2, Veterans Drive, and railroad tracks. The church softens this character somewhat for the residential uses to the south. The proposed Boys and Girls Club is a use like the church and schools that supports the area's residents and families. It is also not uncommon for churches to offer schools, a care, preschool, and high school program. It would appear that the zone change and the proposed use are very compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Will the new zoning affect property values? The new building will comply with the architectural standards of the city. As much of the highway corridor is already zoned commercial, the proposed change should have little impact on neighboring property values. Will the requested zone encourage the most appropriate use of the land throughout the municipality? The subject property is designated in the Columbia Falls Growth Policy as commercial. The text of the growth policy supports this location. The zoning to the north and west is already zoned commercial. It would appear that this is an appropriate location for the requested use. So, in summary, the property is designated commercial by the Columbia Falls Growth Policy. This property is located adjacent to lands already zoned CB2, CI1, CRA1, and CR3. The proposed intensities are supported by the urban services and utilities of the city of Columbia Falls. Staff finds that the subject sufficiently meets the adopted review criteria and supports the property rezoning from CR3 to CB2. Staff recommends that the Columbia Falls Planning Board and City Council adopt staff report, and that number should be CZC 2303, as findings of fact and recommend approval of the zone change to the council, which we say yes.
Thank you, Zune. Before we move over to the public hearing, does the proponent have anyone that would like to present to us on the zone change? If this is just before we, if you just want to see that we get to the public hearing, ask mine too, if you want to provide testimony, then that would go in the permanent record. So, if that's okay with you guys, we'll just move forward ever with the public hearing. Oh, excuse me. Do any of you have any questions for staff?
Well, I just have one. So, you said that the parking will be taken care of once it's approved and everything. So, I guess my only concern and not even linking the picture in my head is where the exit would be on Veterans Drive, just because it comes around the corner there. So, that's the sort of stuff they would cover.
Right. So, when we get the civil plans and the building plans, then we have to review it for, well, obviously, the water, sewer, lining sizes, but the entrance and exit. The Boys and Girls Club did a site plan, a post-site plan with the architectural firm, and they already know, they know how far away from an intersection you have to be on the ins and outs. And so, with that review, like with the, whether it's the large building standards or the exits, but all of that gets reviewed for traffic flow. And they've already started counting out parking spaces and so on. So, they have a professional team working on it, but that's all reviewed for site distance and so on.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come over and speak on this? No, we don't have time.
Keith Valentine, I'm the board of directors for the club, and my address is 427 Wayne Mountain Road, because off Highway 206 there. So, I can speak a little bit to your questions here. I think it's important to point out, though, that we're just requesting a zone change, so our plans could always change, right? But we did provide a site plan, and that access would be right in this area, and it would be a turnaround point. At that point, the building would be here. There's parking, there's 74 places for parking is the way that it's been designed so far. But there would be a bus turnaround, because we'll need to bus people and bus kids out, et cetera, right? So, it comes off Veterans Drive, and this is about the spot where that would actually occur. So, I guess the gist of it is, is we initially, we're going to do a CUP, conditional use permit. And although we were certainly willing to go through that process, then we started to get into it, it seemed like the easiest route would just be to request a zone change, as our, what we're trying to do meets the growth policy. So, it just seemed like, hey, this seems like a good idea. So, why go through all the work for a CUP when we can just do it right, so to speak, and get the correct zoning and be ready to go for our capital campaign, because that would be a big part of that. So, that's about it. I don't know if, I've got two other co-words here, peers with me, so if they want to speak. So, I think I'd answer questions, too, if you have any.
None, no. We can ask after the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Do you gentlemen wish to speak?
My name is Justin Lee, 1615, repairing drive here in Columbia Falls. I'm on the board of directors, have served as the interim CEO a couple times for the club. Been with the organization about four and a half years. And this project has been going on prior to me joining the board. So, it's been, it's been a long, drawn-out campaign, if you will. We really want to be able to just make a place in the community for after-school program, which is what the Boys and Girls Club is. And that location seemed to be one of the better locations. There's not a lot, as you can imagine, available at this time. So, this was one of the prime locations. So, I would say that, you know, we've tried to do our best. We've already spent maybe $80,000, $90,000 on architectural design permits, licenses, or working with an architectural firm called Hundredfold of Lakeside, Montana. They've already built a Boys and Girls Club in Poulsen. We're actually using the plans from the Poulsen Boys and Girls Club. We're trying not to reinvent the wheel. We're trying to go with what works and use a team that has experience. And we have spent a lot of time, a lot of money researching, you know, the right balance between, you know, what looks aesthetically appealing, but what is also affordable, that sort of thing. So, we want to make sure that the community has a nice-looking building. What was mentioned before, there's been only one negative comment that I've come across as the interim CEO, and that was issues with lighting and noise and that sort of thing. And I felt, I feel like, and we all feel like, it's very addressable. Or I don't think it's as bad as some people think, as far as, at least this one person thinks, as far as disrupting the neighborhood. Our program shuts down about 6:30 at night, and then everyone goes home. So, I will say there is a, we do try, try and make this building accessible to, we're having a gym there, so we'd like to have tournaments. We'd like to have another space for basketball, football, that sort of thing. So, there'll be a gymnasium attached to it. So, we do want it to, you know, be a part of the community, a place that'll host all of our children, and then, of course, the community venues. There's even, there's just a lot of ideas I can go with, like even having recce may be out there as well. So, that's all I have to add to the project, so.
Thank you, Grandma.
Yep.
One further, wish to testify in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Don't seem like we have a motion.
Make motion to approve the first reading of ordinance aged 28. Is that right? Is that where we are?
No.
No.
Stafford.
Oh, Stafford. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I make motion to adopt Stafford report, CZC 2303, as findings of fact.
Sure. Second by Piper. Amber will go.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Lumbering?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Price?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye.
Council approves the staff report, CZC 2304. Is that correct?
03.
03. 2303, as findings of fact. Next, we have another motion.
Motion to approve zone change.
Second by...
Motion's been made, and second by King to approve the zone change. May I have it? We'll call on that, please.
Counselor Lumbering?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Price?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye.
Zone change is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. One more step. Yeah, before we move on, I just had a couple things. I didn't know exactly where to go. Just a couple of questions I had, and I'm just going to throw these suggestions at you guys. One of them is making sure that the one person that was concerned about the lights and everything else in that back, is if you really look at toning that tone for them, so your illumination at night or whatever. You know, we have rules, but if we could really look closely at that to try to keep the illumination off of those neighbors. I think that'd be important. Another thing is access to the stoplight. I know going out, pulling out and turning right, turning east won't be an issue coming up, but I'm afraid that people are going to start cutting through the church, and that's going to cause issues with the church. So, I was trying to look at the picture, and I'm wondering if there's any way in the design or anything else, and in the future, somehow you can route traffic out to, I think it's 12th Street? 12th Street West? That is the next one behind you. Is that 12th Street?
12th Avenue.
Well, an avenue would run north and south, but... So, that should be a street. You can either go over to 12th Avenue or 12th Street, if there was a right passing there. 12th Avenue would be turning east immediately, and otherwise, we'd go farther south and turn east. But that's something you may consider, because in the future, traffic's only going to get worse. And right now, people coming to the junior high, that's a real issue. People turning in front of traffic, to cross that going west. So, just a suggestion, you may look out when you're considering all this. Anyone else have any questions or comments for these gentlemen who have gotten here? I don't know. Oh, that's...
What is the capacity? How many children will the completed structure actually hold? Just out of curiosity.
I would hesitate to say I don't know the answer for certain. But it would hold well beyond what we were capable of serving.
Okay. You know, just curious.
Because we had it set up, structured, so that we could have younger kids and also junior high all under the same roof.
Okay.
So, it has capacity, and of course, the commercial kitchen, the gymnasium, all those things.
And the only reason I even ask is historically, if, just for example, the sheriff's department, you know, they build a jail, and it's already, it's out of capacity before they're even done building it. So, well, it was. It's like, so, that was my only question.
Yeah.
If you have room for expansion in the future, that sort of thing.
Yeah, for sure, and it's intended to be more than just the Boys and Girls Club. It's more of a community gathering point. So, we would be hopeful to have events there for the community.
So, maybe you guys could help the sheriff's department.
What's your current capacity? What's your current capacity?
In the building we're in now, we try not to over 75.
Yeah.
That's probably a push.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Very grand.
Grand.
Very grand.
Okay, thank, again, thank you. We have no further questions. We'll move on.
Oops, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding that you guys were going to plan on opening it up for community events if somebody wanted to rent a room to have a family birthday party or a family reunion. You were going to have it available for community members as well, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's more not just for the Boys and Girls Club, but also for the community of Columbia Falls to have other access to facility.
Yeah, that's the idea. The building as it stands, we...
The, the building as it stands, when you ran through projections for cost and things, it's pretty high. Of course, everybody's like, well, about this, and we'll add that, and we'll just do this one thing. And it's millions and millions of dollars right now, this building. So we're kind of hesitant to put anything out there, because this is a huge project, and there's a lot of parts to it. And we just want to make sure that we don't sound like we're trying to promise something that may not come to fruition, as far as, you know, when it comes down to it. And there are soil challenges that we have already, that we just found out about, loose soil that may, may turn our design around the way we need to do it. So there's a lot of variables left in this. But yes, the basic premise that this whole thing started from, and the reason why we're calling it the hub, is it's for the community, not just for the Boys and Girls Club.
Hold on, say it again, miss them. Thank you, guys. We move on. New business? Declare surplus equipment.
Mayor and council.
You can go if you'd like, you won't disrupt us. Okay, thank you.
So the, as required by state law, we're bringing forward the, this, this surplus property. So the two thousand seventeen Ford lease interceptor, we talked about when we were talking about the lease capital improvements in the cars that we had, and that we were going to surplus this one later on. So we, we are also currently working on the capital improvement project, planning for, of course, Public Works. So we have this nineteen eighty-three international spreader truck that we used to land-apply the bio-solids from the wastewater drill plant. After the two thousand nine expansion, we were, we were land-aplying less, because we're terribly limited. We were only land-aplying at the landfill, and we had to go up the hill and so on. Anyway, we weren't using this spreader truck anymore, and we've now revised our process so that it's not suitable for land application. Like, we had to switch up some piping and so on. So we also evaluated that it didn't make sense to, like, just go into the processing, because here's a window to land-apply, and we're not gonna buy a new spreader truck, right? Because we're not spreading, we're not land-aplying. So the nineteen eighty-three spreader truck just sits, sits down on the planet, and might have some value to a private company. And then the nineteen ninety-five Ford LTL, I didn't believe it. It said, I don't remember how many miles. It's a Ford, so I couldn't believe it had, like, two hundred and forty thousand miles on it. As a Chevy girl, that was kind of shocking that a Ford could have that many miles on it. But it was, it was a surplus from once, you had a part of the transportation, one of their, the Iser trucks. So it's nineteen ninety-five Ford. So again, we, we're working on bringing forward this, we're working on that capital. So when we did this, so as, as you folks know, by law, you, the council must declare these items, surplus obsolete and no longer suitable for our purposes. And then the city must give notice that we publish in the newspaper, and we get to, anybody can comment within fifteen days. And then we also include within here that we would sell it and sell or dispose of this surplus asset in the most efficient cost-effective manner, which a lot of times includes parking them in front of the street shop with the for-sale sign, they seem to sell. Or be advertised. If we think it's an item that has a lot of interest, we'll, we'll advertise it, like, on our website and in the newspaper, and then people will submit, seal bids. So the finance and staff and work decided how best to get rid of something. And so that's part of this too. So we're asking you, staff is asking you to declare these three vehicles as surplus, obsolete and no longer suitable for city purposes, at which time we would publish notice Sunday, January seventh, and allow for the fifteen-day comment period.
Council, have a motion?
Motion to approve the item listed as surplus obsolete and publish the sale, or pending sale.
Seconded.
Remain seconded by King, almost in favor, seeing about the second items.
Aye.
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 Motion is approved. Next. First reading ordinance, eight twenty-eight. This deals with what we did at the beginning of the meeting, the ordinance, the city council, a man named Columbia Falls zoning map, and CR approved the CD two general business. One sixty-five veterans drop. Did anyone have a question for the motion? Sitting down there.
Motion to approve first reading ordinance, eight twenty-eight.
Seconded.
It's been made and seconded to approve first reading ordinance, eight twenty-eight, in favor, seeing about the second item.
Aye.
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 Motion is approved, the first reading ordinance, eight twenty-eight. Next, reports from Mayor and Council. John?
I've got stuff, and I suppose I'm prepared.
Here's our chairman, huh?
Oh, yeah, I, we're right back in the playoffs, okay, but you're, don't flip. Still got a pin and a hole.
I, I heard it was gonna be quarterback.
Yeah, might be me, though. Okay, enough of that.
I have nothing, thank you.
Well, Susan, that's your sixty-second shot.
Yes, it is.
Any plans?
Just this meeting.
I might have some snacks in my bag. I have nothing else?
Nothing?
Nothing. I have nothing to do. Happy birthday, Susan.
I just had a couple of things, and one of them was, I'm wondering if now that bears have slowed down and went to sleep, I wonder if we could get our bear management specials, I would show us a report on how we do this year, since how we passed a, a, a ordinance, a resolution, see, whatever it was, policy on keeping garbage out of that, out of the little bear's way. So I'm wondering if maybe you could set them up before she starts getting calls in the spring. Also, it was wonderful to see that the closed clause, which resumed, was such a huge player in, in Columbia Falls for so many years. I hated to see it go, we all did. And now, there's a new daycare there, they're in there, working on it, and they have a sign up, and I'd like to give them congratulations and, and best wishes in the future for, for that. I mean, we need that one, and we need more.
Yeah.
People, people are really hurt for that. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to ask Mr. Shepherd if he had any?
I knew you were gonna do it. She's a bear, she's here. Mr. Shepherd, do you have anything?
No. But Susan, I, I went to say yes, and the screen went blank, so I don't know what you did.
Blocked you.
But I, but I am, I am at meeting, as you know.
Yes.
Now, the only thing I have to say, Mr. Mayor, I spent several days at Bozeman over the holidays, visiting my son, daughter-in-law, and grandkids, and the word of the day that everybody's talking about is densification. And I think the lawsuits are gonna be coming more out of Bozeman, probably, by the new planning stuff. So I guess we're gonna have to wait and see what happens, but that's all. Thank you, and happy birthday.
Thank you. All right. So Mayor, on your agenda, you do have your council committee assignments. I do apologize, I didn't vote this in again. Did everybody look at the committee assignments?
Did everybody got a copy of that? First of all, everybody kind of knows where they're at, right?
I know.
Did you change what I did?
So... Well, initially, if you want to, you could just, you could just tape issues places on these, or... That's, I guess, who wants to be on, right now on Parks and Rec? That's really busy. Who, who wants to be on there? We've got Lovering and Robinson.
I want to stay, for sure.
Me too.
Are me?
I want to stay on first.
I want to stay on that also.
I wish everybody knew where, I was on a flying vehicle.
Everybody's good? Okay, so do you want to laugh, then?
Um, if that's where you need me, sure.
Parks and Rec's in the lead there. Okay, so...
And then, do you need me somewhere else, or?
Well, here's Land Use.
Okay.
Yeah, if anybody wished to move on or off Land Use, I see you can have Land Use also.
What about finance, do you need me right there?
Oh, I'm happy, I'm happy. Nobody likes that one.
My rapper, Trump.
Finance rotates everyone.
It rotates everyone?
Yeah. It's always the mayor and ten pounds of members.
Well, wherever you guys feel that you need me, I mean, I'm happy to jump in if you...
So those are the ones, so, and when we have those meetings scheduled, they'll be announced at the meeting. You'll be involved in picking the date, and you can attend or agree with that. So that's what we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Any further questions, or anything?
So economic development, Fisher was an alternate, so we had Barnhart, Lovering, Robinson. Is that, when you guys looked this over, does anybody want to change? So we would have, we tried to even it out, I know, in the past, so Price, Parks and Rec, and Land Use, and then would be an alternate on economic development and the legislative. Okay, is that...
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
And we always post them, so just maybe if somebody else finds it, it's a, they are all looking.
Just in case anybody wanted to scramble, now would be the time to do that. Mr. Shepherd, are you happy where you're at?
Yes, sir, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
City manager, for?
Okay, so I just wanted to follow up on the truck route. The, um, Council Lovering is on, what is the name of the committee, advisory, advisory committee? And their advisory committee had expressed concerns over the traffic on the truck route, the traffic at Sixth and Fifth, now that that's where the buses and so on come through. There was some concern about the bike path, which, you know, the bike, it's a pretty small right-of-way in there, where the pavement is, and that bike path is, is the west, the west end, no, east end. The east end of the bike path is not a separated path, like, it's separated. The city put that bike path in after Fifth Street Homes, the Habitat project. So we had that couple of blocks that we filled in the, we filled in the gap. So it's as over as far as it can, but the advisory committee had brought up some, some issues, and Council Lovering passed them on, and you might notice now if you drive, we put delineators up, the yellow, how tall are they? Three feet. Put up some delineators adjacent around that corner, where it's not separated from this reefer. Now, these are supposed to bend over when they, when somebody hits them or the plow. We anticipate that plowing will probably take them out, but, but to provide that confidence to the, to the folks using the path. So there was also some concern about with the new stop sign for the northbound traffic, that there's not enough room for trucks, although we didn't move, there should be. But what we did, so council, so you know, we had, we borrowed, we got the cameras from Morrison and Merrily, their traffic study group, and we put the cameras up for a couple of days, and we met virtually with the traffic guys last week. They're gonna do just a small task order to review that, because there was some, like, is the traffic working the way it's supposed to? Because there should be enough room for trucks, like, it should not interfere. But, and then in conjunction with the police. So what we did was took the concerns from the advisory committee, and some reports of, you know, just being bad driving, or not following the traffic rules. So by getting the, by getting forty-eight hours of traffic data, school dates, we'll be able to figure out what do we need to do short-term, right? We don't, in our transportation study, we, we didn't assign any dollar amount or any long-term solution to that intersection, but as, as you guys know, it's, it was an old county road. You got the deeper open bits on the side. It's going to be very expensive to rebuild that. But when Warehouser, before Warehouser sold the property and we redid the, the boundary lines there, we had to hold, the city had to do a chunk of property out of in the middle of the C-Fat Park, or not C-Fat, the Warehouser property. The city had, it looked like a ball field, because it was an old ball field. So that was the city's property. Well, we exchanged that property for moving, for gaining more right-of-way. And little things like our lift station building on the corner of Third and Fourth was actually on their property. So they went through when EDN associates surveyed all of that. So we have a wider right-of-way, but we're not in a position right now to be rebuilding the road or to do anything long-term. But we're gonna take that information from that study, review it with the police department and Public Works and the traffic engineer, and say, what can we do short-term? And it might just be as simple as it's a three-way stop or a four-way stop. But, and then look at the pedestrian traffic. So as you know, we're submitting a RTP recreational materials grant application for the sidewalk and the bike path, right, that, that connection was on Sixth. So is there more, given that that's, that off of Sixth, there's now the front door to the school? Are we seeing more people walking? And if so, what does it look like? So without spending a whole lot of money, but trying to address the concerns, with the Public Works Department, and they might be up now, also ordered delineators for Talbot and Fourth, where, I don't, are they installed? Did anybody drive down Talbot and Fourth? So we've had issues with that corner, we always hear about the corner. So we're putting the same yellow three-foot delineators up around that corner, also making sure that the bike path, that the folks that keep driving, using the bike path as a driveway, stop driving on the bike path. It's kind of conflicts with pedestrian, so, sorry. Just a little. So, so when you see those, that was in, in direct response to concerns about needing to see children. And it is dark, it's, you know, it's dark after school time. I don't know exactly what time those buses hit there, but then you have the older kids, the junior high and high school kids walking through there later. So, and actually in both locations. So we did that. The raise grant is on the desk of the secretary, he gives his desk or signature.
Secretary of what?
The Transportation. It's, we're, we're to the last signature now, and then, and then we'll start that, our process. So the one, Counselor Shepherd said he'd be zooming in. He did want to make sure that we were gonna talk about the Eighteenth Judicial District Court, where the issued a temporary injunction against Senate Bill three twenty-three and Senate Bill five twenty-eight. Three twenty-three was the bill that automatically allowed duplex on a single-family lawn. And five twenty-eight was the permitted accessory dwelling units. Essentially, they did the same thing, right? Turn every single-family residential lot into, you can have two. As you know, right now, if it's, they're conditionally approved, any of you wanna, with a single-family, it's administrative, if it's less than, is it eight, eight hundred or a thousand? Less than a thousand, it has to go through a full loan, so you could have this greater. So that temporary injunction, they had also listed the other two, three eighty-two. I'm trying to remember what the other middle number was now. But they... But, um, they, the judge didn't issue a ruling on that, because that would have gone into effect now. But if we got a building permit for a single-family lot, they could, they could be building a duplex, but there was that injunction. So we, we'll just follow the law, right? So, um, and then, oh, so coming up, so we've been, I talked about it during, um, the surplus equipment. I've been working with public works on their capital outlay planning and what do we have, what do we need? Where does the funding come from? So as you know, throughout the holiday, we, we hit police and fire first. And then, um, we'll work on streets watering sewer, we'll be coming to you in February for review. So my last thing, so in, in concert, in concert with my birthday, turning sixty-two today, it occurred, I have been in local government, serving local government in one way or another for four years. Fresh out of college, started auditing at twenty-two. That's kind of stapled to me. And this is my twenty-fifth year with the city, minus nine months in N O six, when I wasn't officially tied to the city. But I have thirteen years as city manager. And so, um, the mayor mentioned at the last meeting how, you know, you plan your life around council meetings. I tried to convince my children that October was a good time for an outdoor wedding, but they didn't listen to me. So one, one wedding was the first week in August, which is, you know, is budgetary time. And the other wedding was the last week in July, which is also budget time. But, um, I understand that October is not the best for outdoor weddings. But I have, I can count on my hands how many council meetings. Actually, it's not even two full hands in twenty-five years that I've missed, whether it's for the loss of a family member or a family emergency. And Barb knows, everybody knows. I, I'm very passionate about the city, feel like I'm blessed to serve this community. But I am looking at retiring at the end of my contract, which is June thirty.
Of this year.
Of this year. So it's, it's hard, because this is, this is my community, and I thoroughly enjoy working with you. This is exceptional, council. But I do need some more flexibility, as my children have scattered a little bit, and I have grandchildren. And I can't plan everything around the first and third and the second Tuesday of everyone. I try, believe me, I tried to tell them that, um, we can't do it then, I have a meeting. So, um, but that's what I'm looking at, is retiring in twenty-twenty-four. And obviously, um, I already have this to-do list, and everything will be done. And I have great confidence in my staff and this, and this council. So there is never a perfect time, but I know where we are with projects and where we will be at that time. And I'm not going anywhere, I'm four blocks away. So, um, and everybody knows my mother, but that is what I'm looking at, is retiring again.
Uh, that being said, um, at what point should we start looking for a new city manager?
Immediately.
Yeah, especially if there could be the overlap of position. I mean, I don't know if that's possible, but shadowing all the things.
And this is a hired position?
This position works for the seven people here.
What are the, is, is someone has to apply and be hired or appointed?
Appointed.
Okay, okay.
Whatever process you go through. And obviously, I'm here to assist the council.
So, uh, when I worked on the personnel hiring for the new director of the county health board, it took quite a while. Yeah, you put your fingers out early, and they use a professional headhunter. I don't know whether we need to do that, but it's something I guess we have to look at. And, uh, I guess, uh, you're right. So when do we want to start the process? We probably have to form a committee and, uh, and work through a committee, bring it to the council on as a new board. So who amongst you?
Who's on the personnel committee now? Oh, you all have to do that now. You have, um, Leo, it would, it's probably more accurately labeled personnel and salary negotiations. Shepherd, King, Robinson, alternate Farhart.
The which committee?
Well, we have, it's, on here it says salary negotiations, but it is personnel slash salary negotiations.
Salary negotiation, I was wrong.
It should say personnel.
Salary negotiations.
Yeah.
It's your honor. Shepherd, Hamilton, and Robinson.
And you're an alternate.
I'm the alternate.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm Weston.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm assuming we have our duties of city manager on a piece of paper?
Absolutely.
And the business needs it is, I'm assuming we have one of those.
Absolutely.
It's in municipal code and state statute.
Okay, uh, can you give, can you give us some time, will we at least review that and bring it back in a meeting or two?
I'd also like to see John description, you have had Susan through all your duties and also what you really, whatever. I'm serious, because it's a little legal thing and then the draw.
I mean, here's, here's something, I've always said it's going to tell me how many people will take to replace you, because you do so many things. So I would like to know not only what the actual thing is, but also what else you do, because either someone else has to do it or a new person has to do it.
So, so what I think has to happen is we have to have that initial meeting. Those questions that you're asking like right now, those need to be brought forward for answers. Agreed? So, so that meeting, that first, uh, meeting should be held rapidly.
Yes.
Um, we've got another meeting, would I like to come to work for something?
You meet, so you have a workshop on the twenty-second? And I, I mis-typed it on here, but the Public Safety Committee, King, Piper, Barnhart, alternate Shepherd is also meeting on jointly with the Columbia Falls Rural Fire District Omniscy.
At what time?
At, Rural Board meets at six thirty.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. The Rural Fire Board meets at the, uh, Fire Hall at six P M on the eve.
So could we, uh, I think the only reason we're doing that, the joint thing, is they want to show us a new fire truck plan?
Yes.
Okay, so why can't we do that in that meeting, meeting at seven? If the meeting at the Fire Board is at six, why can't the committee get together at seven? Just move over here and, and put together a list of questions and concerns?
I'm in the bag.
Who cares?
So January eighth, seven P M.
Yeah, after the Rural Board meeting.
Okay.
After we can see the funds there.
And that's Shepherd, King, Robinson, Barnhart.
Um, we have a handful of them for, but we.
Counselor Shepherd, are you, you will still be out of town on the eighth, correct?
No, ma'am, I will be home, I'll be home on Saturday.
Oh, you're home on, okay. It's hard to keep up with your schedule.
I know.
Okay.
So in the meantime, I say that, if we can't, we definitely don't have four people.
We'll post it as a meeting.
Pardon me?
We'll post it as a, as a meeting. So you can have four people within a few hours.
Even with those four people coming, that doesn't negate the other council members coming and...
No, it's posted as a public meeting and we'll make a decision.
Why don't we just have a meeting at the whole?
Sounds good.
Maybe, 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 seven, seven o'clock after that on the eve.
Sure. Everybody or just you?
Everybody.
Okay. Okay, seven P M, January eighth. So after that, after the joint Public Safety Rural Fire District Board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I, so, my, my experience in council with that was the, the staff is, like, really important. So if there's any way we have time and you have the inclination to be involved in this, meaning to also answer questions? I know it takes, it takes extra time, and you probably have other things that you'd rather be doing. But I, but I think this is a, a real important thing, and I, and the staff is extremely important for this.
So you get contact all the time?
For me?
Yeah. What?
Either.
Okay. So obviously, if they participate in that, it could be probably compensated, right?
Oh, yeah.
And desperate.
I do have a question.
Sure.
If, um, if you have a list of, of what the job duties are, what you're, you know, what is supposed to be put out there. A lot of times when you're hiring in HR, you have the full range of duties. If we could have that ahead of time, just for any questions or research that we could kind of look into, so that when we're at that meeting, um, we can kind of see the big broad, um, areas that we may miss, or that, uh, we just want to make sure that everyone...
It's broad, that management day-to-day affairs of the city.
Also, um, pay scale, could you give us an idea? Are you going to participate in this meeting with us?
If you ask me to.
Did you what?
First, does it participate in the meeting with us, definitely?
Yeah, pretend.
Yeah. Right.
So we have, we do this salary surveys and so on.
Also, maybe, probably stepping online here, but, uh, in your mind, leave some consideration to contracting with the city to see us through our budget process, the annual report of this year at least, because I know how, uh, complicated that process is. And having someone do step in, uh, it would be, uh, very overwhelming for both them and their staff, so we would...
I'm four blocks away.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, you can trashfully, you're four blocks.
We can certainly, those determinations will be together. And we can talk about, uh, how should we be paid for doing that, all of that kind of stuff, so. Let's, let's just get started on the, on the process and, um, and, uh, boy, are you going to be missed. I, I, last time I signed up for this job, I said, I'm only staying until Susan's...
Oh, there we go. Everybody just starts jumping off.
He's just getting me going.
Well, you guys make it really easy. It's hard, it's a very hard decision. Part of it, so going to the meeting where we were supposed to be introducing ourselves to, you know, this group of people, and you had, you know, the city manager that literally had been on the job for like six days and then, and then, you know, the three years, and then, you know, thirteen years as a city manager, but you're like, well, how many years do you have in local government? So you start thinking about forty. I was twenty-two years old when I was auditing local governments. When I first said, this is great, this is a dream job, and it's a dream job, and this is a dream job. I am so blessed that I, that here in our community, where we raised our family. So, but that flexibility, living, living on the calendar, it's really difficult, particularly with a retired spouse. Because I still say, I've worked, right, and here's the calendar. My family does the, their family reunion the first week in July. I go about every six years. This is fun time. So, um, they Photoshop me in the, they think they're funny, they Photoshop of me. So one time when my mom was visiting, she took a picture of me working on the computer, that's the one that they've photoshopped me. Here's our family reunion, and here's Susan. But, but, um, yes, I'm here and, uh, I'll be cracking the door. But we have a lot of good things happening, a lot of projects, there's a lot of things to do, and so, um, but yeah, certainly whatever, whatever council needs. In the meantime, it's, uh, of course, it's business as usual.
I'd like to make a wish, and I, Susan's...
John's on my side. It's just a time to vote for county commissioner next year.
Okay. See, oh. Is there a journey?
I'm sorry, um, Counselor Shepherd had sent me an email earlier today about the applications for planning commission. Sorry, Michael, I, I, it's, I can't even read my own writing. Michael proposed asking, um, folks that submit letters of interest to, he had a small list of questions that he wanted to send out. We haven't received any letters yet. Barb's going to be kicking it to Chris to put in, uh, community events, something, I don't know what that call is. Um, it's on the, it's on the website. The Hungry Horse News article did generate some interest, people called. Are you guys interested in, in asking them, do you want to interview people? Do you want to send out a list of questions? And then by chance, Counselor, do you have your, it was just a list of four or five questions that he sent. So I had written that down for discussion. Do you have your questions handy?
Susan, I, I don't have them, but they were simple questions, you know, being that I've been on a planning board for a long time. It's, you know, you, you start out, uh, do you have any background in areas of growth? The second question would be, can you define growth? The third one is, can you make decisions and eliminate the emotion aspect? It's just the normal stuff that we run into with the planning board, simple little questions. Otherwise, you're going to have, I want to be a board member, and that's only going to get on an application. So it's something to think about, board, if you want to ask a few questions, and then we can review the, the responses and go from there.
Council?
I can't hear you, Susan.
I don't have a follow-up.
Mayor asked for questions out there for applicants.
Yeah, I could...
We've got to give interest in how we get applicants. We've got to educate them what we need.
Could something like that be something we could put on our website? What do you think, Mike, put that on the website?
Uh, if, if that's the simplest way to do it, that's, that's the way we'll do it, yep.
If anybody has any interest in it, we've turned up any interest, they can direct into the website, just four easy questions, and, uh, if they're still interested, put in an app or put in a letter.
And the city clerk can include that in the, in the info box to Chris, to under community, like if you're interested in, your letter of interest and addressing these key items.
Who decides what the four questions are?
You guys. So the, so the questions that Councilman Shepherd just proposed, does anybody have any other thoughts? Do you want me to send them out to you?
Susan, I can, I can probably flag that on some of the messages that I've sent to you, and I'll send them back to you here as soon as the meeting's over, all right?
Okay.
And you can get them to us, and we can look at them if we want any changes or additions, we can send it back to you.
Yeah, and then, and Barb will get it on the, on the website, have to be similar to us, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Susan?
Would there be a reason we have to pass the questions through the attorney?
I mean, I, I can look at them, certainly, and I doubt we're going to be, you know, coming from this group. There's nothing that's going to be offensive or illegal anyway, but sure, I'm going to look at them.
Just in case.
Thank you for the low confidence. Okay, uh, Chief, do you have anything in this meeting? All right, see, go for the business, we brought the board, the board.
I moved the bench.
She's been eight seconds, all in favor, so you probably see that.
All right.
Pierre will be proud of you.
Record your thoughts.